Order at three fifty-eight or two fifty-eight for the work session. We're like here, motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Adopting the agenda?
Not adopting the agenda, yeah.
Huh?
We're not adopting the agenda, right?
Oh, it is.
Technically, you're adopting the agenda with the changes of...
Okay.
And the changes were take the pledge allegiance.
Oh, that's what you said, I can hear. Okay. So I will make a motion to adopt the agenda with the pledge allegiance.
That'd be great.
Motion, hold on a second.
Good morning, evening.
You see this?
It's not, actually. Oh, wait, another one.
I'll be seconded.
I'll be seconded.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, let's move on down to discussion and view meeting with Southern Oregon Tourism Representative regarding lodging tax. Who wants the floor?
Wow, that was fast. I've met someone here before. My name is Bob Hackett. I'm with Travel Southern Oregon.
Okay, could state your name so she can have a floor record?
I got it.
H-A-C-K-E-T-T, Associate Director of Travel Southern Oregon. We are the regional contractor with Travel Oregon, which is the state tourism agency. And we have worked in close connection with Jessica and the Lake County Chamber to date on lots of great initiatives that have come out of Lake County in the past year, eighteen months. And we were here at a work session, I believe, maybe ten months ago, you know, when the TLT was about to go through or had just gone through and talking about ways to think about moving forward. Was able to attend the advisory committee's meeting earlier today. And I just, you know, wanted to be sure that the seventy thirty was very clear to everybody in the town and the state attorney, the town attorney, that thirty percent for general funds, seventy percent for marketing for tourism promotion and tourism-related facilities. Those appropriate uses are fairly clearly spelled out by statute. And I, but I did want to point out, and this comes back to where ten months ago I was advocating for the same thing, is that one of those uses for the seventy percent of tourism promotion is strategic planning and research. And so I understand that, so the council is asking the advisory committee appropriately to field requests from the town and work together to come up for a way of how do you decide what to do, what you're going to do with the money? And strategic planning is an entirely appropriate use of that seventy percent of money for councils just like this and advisory committees just like this to all work from a shared document for a community to assess the assets it has and to come up with a shared strategic approach to promoting that to visitors to drive economic impact in the community. And so while on the face of it tourism promotion, that doesn't, isn't the first thing that comes to people's minds, I think since this is a first go-around between the town and this tax, it might be money well spent, actually, as a community to get a shared document that everybody's working from to outline some of the goals. You guys have great assets in Lakeview and the surrounding area, and people will stay in Lakeview to see all of those. And so I know the work that's been going on down here, Travel Oregon up at the state level, is very, very aware of it, much more aware now than they were eighteen months ago, I think. I know we are constantly pushing stories out to the media for Lake County and Lakeview, and we will continue to do so. I really do think it's one of the great, it's one of the most, the best undiscovered parts of Oregon, and most visitors just don't understand that yet because we haven't told the story yet. And so we really are here as partners with you to help tell that story in a way that works for Lakeview, in a way that works for Lake County. But the biggest successes we've had is when we've seen or when communities have actually done the stakeholder work of coming up with some strategic plan. I'm not talking about a fifty-page document either. This could be a two-page document. So that when you're looking at fifty proposals from people in your community, you have a way to say, yes, these five things, they're actually furthering our goals, and these are great projects. Maybe we can do them some other way, but they're not really at the top of the strategic plan that we have for this five years. Maybe the next five years you change that, so.
Everything I've seen so far is everything's been on Lake County. I haven't seen anything on like promoting the business in Lakeview itself, you know? There needs to be some promotion there like the Alger Theater, Julia's, Ace Hardware, changing names and then things.
The Chamber does that, though, Ray, we do that.
But is it in the brochures?
Yes.
Okay, I haven't seen one with any of Lakeview itself in it.
I showed you the brochure that we have in, it showcases all of our members. Ace is in several different places, Alger Theater is in several different places. The Travel Southern Oregon Guide is also showcased, Alger Theater, its article starts out with Lakeview.
Okay.
If any of you, I give this to you. So these were done by Brad and Bob. This is the, it says in big bold letters Downtown Lakeview. So these were distributed.
I haven't seen them, so that's...
They're in every hotel, they're in every room of our hotels, they are distributed throughout town. We have these in the Chamber in constant stock, and you distribute these.
And so this is our first round, you know, Travel Southern Oregon was under leadership, different leadership a year and a half ago. Brad and I, Brad and Ivan and I came on. This was our first round at our version of what we think a vacation guide should be. So I think we're thinking along the same, same page on that one. Additionally, those of, in our e-newsletter, we have 10,000 people who love Southern Oregon. We send them an email every month, you know, on Friday, an article's going out on Heart Mountain and the Antelope Refuge. But in reading, you can't read about the Heart Mountain Antelope Refuge without reading about Lakeview and where to stay and where to eat and all of those kinds of things with links in the article. I think you'll see a spotlight on Lakeview in our April. And so my point simply being that it's in the conversation, Lakeview and Lake County are in the conversation. What's also true is that visitors aren't drawing that line wherever it is out there between the town and the county. They're doing, they're doing both.
They're gonna naturally stay here, whether it be they're here for skiing, they're here for the Roundup, they're here because they wanted to see Fort Rock and they're driving through. We have the hotels, we have the restaurants. There's, you know, you can stay in somewhere like Hot Springs, you know, if you want to, or eat at Cowboy Dinner Tree. But if you're coming through with a family, it's feasible, more feasible to stay in a Best Western or Interstate Eight that we have here. So using our assets throughout the county and in Lakeview is always going to help us drive here in Lakeview because we are the biggest town in our county. People will naturally come here and shop at Ace and hopefully go see a movie at the Alger Theater and walk through our shops and stay in our hotels. We already naturally have that. It's driving tourism through these other things, whether it be in the county or here in Lakeview, so that they stay, they eat, sleep here, not...
Jessica and I were talking yesterday, and I actually made the point, you can't just put Ace or Backyard Floral or anybody in an ad to come to Lakeview because they have all these things in their own town. Why do they need to come to Lakeview for them? But the Ski Hill, the Trails upriver Canyon, Fort Rock, Hole in the Ground, whatever you want to say in the county, that will draw them here.
And it will directly affect Dan and Lori at Backyard Floral and Carrie at Les Schwab and everywhere else because we can, we can drive tourism a certain way. And we, that's what Travel Oregon and Travel Southern Oregon and the Chamber does is we can model it to where the ads look like these do and go see Fort Rock and crack in the ground and the Ski Hill and stay here in Lakeview. So we can, we can kind of control that in some ways. We can really get that idea out there to where it's, that's where you want to do. We just did a story with Travel Oregon on a three-day suggested itinerary that they pushed out for us. So I put that all over Facebook and it was on their website, and I think you guys probably shared it on yours, where it's a suggested itinerary where you can hit all of these different places. You can start in Fort Rock and end up in Lakeview, and our members were highlighted. The Happy Horse Deli was highlighted, Julia's was highlighted, to stay there and have their flowerless cake, it'll change your life, were the exact words that were in there, that I say all the time and I wrote. It will change your life, and I'm gonna have some tonight on my birthday, so.
I didn't know they had that, I just wrote it down so I don't forget.
Yeah, don't forget because it will change your life, and you will tell people that. So these little things that are throughout our county, they're not our enemy, there shouldn't be a drawn line. We should be using these places to help us, just like Ben does with Mount Bachelor and Sun River does with Mount Bachelor. They stay there, they'll ski for the day and stay there.
Portland does with Mount Hood.
Yeah. Eugene does it with the Lamont.
And it's an hour and a half to get up there.
Yeah.
Medford does it with the Oregon Chicks Festival.
They've figured this out, they're not at war with each other, they work with each other. We cannot say come to Lakeview and see Ace Hardware. I love Ace Hardware.
Yeah.
And he's on my board and I love him.
You're killing me, Smalls.
One of my friends in my book. But I, but you can't do that. I mean, our businesses are important, but they need, but they need to benefit in the best way that we can, we can do that for them is bringing them in for all of our other assets and using everything we already have. We're already a destination, we just need to form that and using partners like Travel Southern Oregon and Travel Oregon and all of the assets that we have, we can formulate that. So even telling someone a suggested itinerary that if you start with Fort Rock and you end up in Lakeview, even though you're gonna leave a little bit of money at Cowboy Dinner Tree, you're gonna leave a little bit of money, you know, kind of on your way, go through Paisley, go through wherever, that's, that's fine with us. We're gonna get the majority of your dollars here. I mean, that's just the way it's going to work because we have more shops, we have the hotels, we have more businesses. We already, we already have that, we already own that. It's just about using all of our assets in a positive way and not being so segregated that we dismiss all of the county and what we really have and not benefit from it. So there are several different ways to use that with the tourism money to where we can really fill our hotels. I mean, Roundup is not technically a town event, it's not in-town limits, but it directly fills all of our hotel rooms right now. And Juniper's glamping, the same thing, they will come in on a shuttle and spend their money in Lakeview. They will get tired of the vendors like we all do, it's all fun for the first day, and then when we all, you know, wake up and want to kill ourselves.
We stay on the scale.
We go to The Nest one day, and we go to Julia's, and we spread it all out. You have to use, we're not trying to create something new, we're trying to benefit directly off of exactly what we already have that is only really moving up because people don't know about us yet. We're kind of the buzz now. I mean, Travel Oregon and Travel Southern Oregon have helped us be the buzz outside of Lake County. We have to advertise outside of Lake County, outside of Lakeview to really see the benefits of that.
Well, I certainly agree that, you know, to me, I fell in love with Lakeview literally seven years ago on St. Patrick's Day, and to me, it's been, I mean, it got me to move here and uproot where I've been for twenty-seven years. So I love it, I love the entire county. I mean, I feel like I've only seen a small fraction, and there's so much to discover, so, so much. I don't even think that we've even touched the beginning of it. I think what my personal thoughts are that I would like to see more inclusive businesses. I know that, you know, I sort of own like two or three different businesses, and I've never been personally even reached out to, to include in, you know, tourism, obviously.
I've talked to you about Chamber membership, I've talked to you about Chamber membership.
I've messaged you, yeah.
I talked to you about it at one, I think, the B Street. It was when you had your farmhouse sign that I wanted.
Yeah, we were discussing it then, but, you know, I've talked to some people, but I feel like we need to try to, there's a lot of businesses out there that are starting up or struggling, probably even that are smaller that maybe can't afford the Chamber membership. But, you know, I'd like to see some of that, those lodging tax views towards kind of bringing in a little bit of everybody. And I know that, you know, we can direct them to a general direction and they can discover things, you know, as they're wandering about, things like that. And I certainly think you've got some great town celebrations, that would be a great opportunity. I'm very fond of St. Patrick's Day, yes. No, you're not, I'm Irish, so, you know, I think there's still so many more. I mean, I can't even imagine what you guys got geared up for the summer because maybe I've wandered a place with a hundred years, so you're probably swamped. But I'd like to see what, you know, summer stuff is coming, and I think that is another opportunity I think we obviously need to hit on eventually. When do you guys do your strategic planning, are you doing it currently?
For the Chamber?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we do it. I mean, it's constant.
Do you guys have a specific, well, we kind of have a specific time here, so, you know, do you guys have a specific time of year where you do your strategic planning, or is it an ongoing?
Well, we do it usually at the beginning of our years where we have our budget and all of that.
Yeah, we'll generally do the budget and I just worked up just a, it took me five minutes, throw some numbers in, hand it to Jessica, where are we gonna spend our money this year? And you can't touch this number, this number, this number, and this number because those are operating expenses.
But we usually do it towards the beginning of our year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other things come up, but, you know, there's, I guess I'm wondering about where you feel that seventy percent should go, if you're talking about small business? How that tourism money should be used for small business?
I think we have a lot of outtakes for promotion of small businesses in the community. I know that my number one thing is I'm a huge fan of shopping local, and I was able to do, you know, Christmas shopping all local. And I, literally a big thing for me was when I built my pumpkin patch, there was maybe around about a hundred dollars I spent out of several thousand that was not local, besides the pumpkins, which were not local.
How many people attended your pumpkin patch that were from out of town?
Couple hundred. Oh, actually, I got about twenty people from out of town, at least that I knew of. I had people from Klamath, which I thought that was a pretty big deal, you know, I mean, it's Klamath, come into Lakeview, and Alteris that I know of. So to me, I may be on a small scale, but it's that right there that, you know, we need to treat everyone that brings in tourism or, you know, is working to build a business. And we're talking year one, I thought that was pretty darn good. I know we've got a lot of new businesses here right now that have kind of started out, and even, you know, I mean, how long-term business, but to bring in business from Klamath, I thought the other day was pretty fantastic, so.
And just to share with the council, just, I think the way that in the state tourism process, when we think of tourism impacting tourism, driving tourism, that's really hooked to overnight visitation because that's where you collect the overnight tax. So that when we, when we talk about tourism promotion, what is in parentheses behind that is driving overnight stays. And so I think that's the kind of thing that a strategic plan would help you sort of, I think, get at. And it's really super high level, I think, at first. I mean, I think you have things in town that are already functioning that may need some more promotion. You also maybe have gaps, you might have lots of weekends in the summer where maybe you want a new event. Maybe you say we want twenty-five percent of this, of the seventy percent to go to creating a new town event in the summer. Maybe it's a women's rodeo, maybe it's a, I don't know, maybe it's a new hang gliding thing with a new, not, not in any interest in telling you what to do, but just that there might be a bucket that goes to creating a new event that might drive overnight visitation on, at a time of year when that's not happening right now. And so, and then some other stuff may be supporting projects that are already going. It's really up for the, for the town and your stakeholders to come up with your priorities, but I just think a good list of priorities would help you make the decisions that you're gonna get faced with when you have twenty applications sitting in front of you.
One of the things I've been kind of looking at is, you know, I've worked with a buddy on a little bit, is we're trying to promote Little League and bring some tournaments to town, which would create overnight stay and everything else without falling around of the hotel.
Well, there certainly are towns that have sports commissions, like, you know, you get Medford, Klamath, Salem, you have, you have towns that have really gone in and gone into sports as a driver for overnight visitation. I don't know how, if there's one, I don't know if there's one field that we're talking about, if there's a complex of eight fields. I think you have to do a feasibility study, you know, and, and so to get to your question, qualifying tourism infrastructure or facilities like visitor centers that are substantially dedicated to tourism events. So attorneys can argue over what substantially means. Does it mean fifty-one percent of the days on the field are driving tourism? I don't know what that means. So I think there would just have to be some analysis on the feasibility, is it gonna drive room nights?
Well, I can tell you, as being a parent, and I, you know, we have two parents that are currently Little League parents, have sat on the boards for four days prior to this year, it's a good three to four days stay, and we spend a lot of money as parents. I mean, you know, there's hotels, there's travel trailers, and then there's food. In our fields, what we'd like to see have more of those is those be brought up to All-Star level, which would be, you know, depending on how Little League's going, four to six teams, would that be about accurate, buddy? Is it four or five last year, when?
You know, I mean, it depends on, yeah, but if we hold an All-Star tournament, you're talking...
Way more, yeah.
You know, you're talking twelve to fourteen teams here probably, so.
That is definitely something, I know that it may be a small impact, but it's, to me, something I think is important because we're talking...
It would be bigger than St. Patrick's Day by far.
This is true, yeah, it would be. Although I do have friends that come in, you know, over here.
So my understanding is what you have is you have an advisory committee that are really people who are stakeholders and professionals in the industry, sort of just maybe working with you to just give feedback, recommendations on things that come across the desk.
So I have a question, and I have to give a shout out to the Chamber. I don't really have a dog in this hunt, I'm not part of the Chamber, I have two businesses in Lakeview, and I should be, and I'm going to be. But not being part of the Chamber, they have promoted my businesses, not paying my dues, so I will say I really appreciate that. So that goes a long ways. But would the Little League becoming, you know, part of the Chamber, doing some of that stuff, would that?
Well, that, so I talked to Travel Oregon about that.
And then that's where it kind of comes, that's where it kind of comes into Nikki, the smaller thing, you know, Little League, I don't know if Little League can really afford to pay a member fee, you know?
Well, Fort Rock isn't a member, Crackin' the Ground isn't a member. I mean, there, there are places, the Ski Hill is a member, Roundup is a member, but there are places that, that just aren't members because it's a rock or, you know, I mean... But with, with what I talked to Travel Oregon about and what I talked to Brad and Bob about when we saw this first, came to this meeting, was what that would actually look like, sports tourism here. I mean, we know what it looks like in other places that you go visit and you spend your money in, but what does it look like here? And so what it would look like with the Chamber would be you're probably allocating some of those funds for marketing. So marketing would have to be a slice of that. So if you just, it's, you know, I mean, it worked for Kevin Costner, but if you just build it, they won't come, they, they don't know where we are. So we, we need to market it, so using...
And we're not just talking Little League either, you know, last year we had, I call it old man softball league, and it was a big hit, and I think it's gonna be a bigger hit this year, and I can see probably tournaments coming from that.
Yeah, we're absolutely one hundred percent on board with Little League with any kind of, that's a fantastic project that we would love to be behind, but it does come with, with planning. I mean, and with, with marketing money that you would have to also consider if you were going to use some of that seventy percent TLT money to go towards updating a Little League field for a future tournament. You also have to allocate some of those funds for marketing that. So it would have to be more in line of this, of a plan on how this would work together, when this would work, when the fields are up, when we've gotten, you know, the things we need to get done, the sprinklers, the road to control, all of, all of that, and we're up and running and we're ready. And now we've been, and we've been marketing this, and now we've gotten, you know, to this stage now, we can do professional pictures, we can really reach out to who we need to reach out for, we can make those connections to the tournaments and all of that stuff. Okay. So March twenty-fifth, so we have a day. So, but, but those funds also, they need to, they need to work together to make sure that the tourism money is being placed in the right, in the right form. I mean, you have to, you have to, if you're going to help with road to control on a field and at some point, hopefully, they'll, we'll get some, some tournaments, you have to actually, you know, also use that marketing and build those relationships and use some of the money for that as well, for it all to work together.
And one thing, when I spoke with Roberta when Brad and I were over here last year, you guys as a community are volunteer heroes. At some point, volunteers only go so far because people burn out. And if you actually are gonna go into sports tourism or you're gonna find ways for the city to maybe take the Roundup further or do something like that, you could also consider some part-time staff to actually, someone whose job is to help these things happen and succeed and take some of the load off of all of these volunteers. Because everything's great for two, three, four years, but boy, oh, boy, there's nothing like having a dedicated person if you're gonna really go into the tour, and you are. We're excited to have Lakeview come in as a tourism partner. It's really important to the region to have another partner who sees the value of tourism and is able to help get the word out, out there. Considering professionalizing that investment that you're making as a community, it, it, it may also be something that's worth considering. I literally, I don't even know how much money that's even available or not, you know, in terms of...
Oh, we were just discussing that earlier.
But it's a, it's a consideration.
So buddy, you could get paid for this, just kidding.
No, you guys are heroes, everybody just carries such a volunteer.
This town runs on a lot of volunteers.
So I just wanted to mention one thing, it's a little bit off the subject, but it goes back to the very beginning of the conversation, and I think that Nikki brought it up about the newer businesses, ones that are startups and ones that are struggling, et cetera. SCOED, that's part of what we do, is we have a loan program for those that are not able to qualify for regular bank loan. Our monies are not able to be used for competing with a bank, you know, you have to be turned down in order to qualify for our loan program, which is very different than in the business world. And I do a lot of startup counseling, and we work really closely with the Small Business Development Center over in Klamath Falls. They come over here a lot and they do classes and they do business counseling, and I also do business counseling a lot with, with folks. It's done quietly, it's done very confidentially, people don't usually even understand or know that I do that. I don't usually meet with people in my office because they don't, you know, I go to their business or we go someplace else. But that's very much available, and that's really what our role is, or one of our roles here in the community, and that allows the Chamber to really be fully involved in promotion. And often I get referrals from the Chamber about, or they ask or let people know that we do that type of work. So, you know, it's just one, we all kind of have to help each other so that we're not overrun with doing fifteen different things. So just so you know that that's something that SCOED can and does do.
Well, not during, I can't do it during this session, but during regular town session, Mike will be appointed as the chairman for our tourism, our lodging tax, I mean, so he'll be working with you guys a lot on this and stuff, on this lodging tax thing. But, you know, like I said, you know... But, um, uh, you know, like I said, you know, Lakeview is, is the heart of Lake County, so, you know.
It absolutely is, yeah. We feel the same way.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to see, you know, a little more of Lakeview in, you know, I grew up here, I've been here all my life, so. Okay, Council, do you have anything else for them? I do appreciate though you coming all the way here to, to do this.
I'm gonna scoot out and get back over before the, thank you, and, and as I've told Jessica, anytime you, if you, if you have further questions or work sessions, you, you would like us or somebody else to be at, we're happy to be here.
Yeah, you're also listed in the new business for regular session.
It's okay, we can, it's okay, cause Jess is here, we can just, cause we can discuss it, so it's okay.
Lay is on positions, we're gonna have to tangle because this is gonna be the whole year. I do appreciate you guys coming and your input.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, when we travel, we go to different hotels. Those are some of the first things I pick up.
Yeah, we've had those with the chamber all year.
Cause I look at, I look at restaurants and stuff in there.
And there'll be another one out in May, and then with the, with the, uh, Welcome Center opening on I-5, uh, I don't know how many, in Ashland, there's a new state Welcome Center. Coming into Oregon, it's gonna open in April. And nobody knows the counts that are gonna be coming through there, but there's a great opportunity in Southern Oregon to have people pick that up before they even get ten miles into the state, and so hopefully.
So these are updated annually?
We do this every year, yes.
Thank you guys, have a safe trip.
Man, Don, we're gonna have to table, uh, but it's a table too, but lay it on, figure out which ones you want.
I know that Darwin really.
He wants, he wants a Little League.
And did you guys see, I gave you a blank form? And there's some missing. I mean, there's some odd ones missing, I think, um, but they're like odd ones.
There's some that are duplicated.
Well, there's some, some that interact with others.
Do you not know how passionate I am about dusting up in Austin? Do you not see my mister's claws?
All right, let's, let's move on to, uh, the Little League handout. Did, is this something that we put together or did Little League?
I did this, based on my meeting, um, two weeks ago.
Right, uh, one thing I did see in here, and need to talk to Jeff about.
The water?
No, the water, I talked to him about that, but it's, uh, has to do with the blading of the area.
The grading?
Yeah, and it said once, one time.
Once a year.
We could add more.
I think, I think that should be changed as needed.
Which is at least once a year.
It's at least once.
At least, um, kinda depends, we can add that. So what I did when I, when I came up with this is, having been on the other side of this, knowing what Little League's interest is, and then obviously talking with Buddy, listening to them present what their game plan is in the future, I kind of, um, put this together. Um, I'm not a hundred percent if we need to, um, have this reviewed by legal or not. But, um, uh, my biggest thing was, the town's liability obviously was a concern. So that's where I added in that any subcontracting, they would have to ensure proper, um, licensing and insurance.
I believe they always have carried their own insurance.
They do, but any, like, we had COED softball. Yes, Buddy happened to be the one that also carried that insurance.
Yeah.
Um, but let's say Buddy's not there next year or something, and, and somebody's new, we just wanna make sure this contract follows anybody that comes into that, that position. Um, really, for the most part, I, the contributions by the town are the blading, or grading. I offered, since we do get probably a better discount than somebody outside on doing, did I say four signs? Yes, four signs for each dugout that say no smoking. We have the.
We actually, yeah.
Alcohol or drugs.
We actually already have those signs, so they just need to be put up.
A few years ago.
The public, uh, whatever.
Public health?
Yeah, public health issued those to us last year.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so we can stop off this year.
Stephanie told me to put them up a long time ago, I just gotta get them and put them up, so.
Okay, so we could probably eliminate that then.
And there was one down there that says no dogs allowed except on a leash. I had the county make that.
So, I think, yeah.
I think that my personal thought on that was that I know a big concern is these dogs.
So, I need to get with our board, but we're, we're also gonna have to go over our insurance, and it's probably gonna have a sign up there, there's no dogs allowed. Just for, just for our insurance reason.
Okay.
I would guess, the way things are going now.
Yeah, you would almost agree.
I, even, if we have signed down, it says no dogs allowed, unless they're on a leash and it still be the kid, even though it's on a leash, you know, it kinda scares me. So probably it's gonna be no dogs allowed.
Okay, and that's something that you guys can make later on at your own choice. Our side of it as a public property park per se, we require leashes. Something I've heard of it, we're talking about ordinances down the road and things like that, so I felt like that would fit right in there. The only other thing was the contribution of man-hours by the town, which, um, I think that was the only thing, right? Besides turning on the water and turning off the water.
So, I haven't seen the new one.
Do you want it? Who hasn't seen this?
No, I've seen an old one.
You can have this, buddy.
I'm gonna connect to them, those ones should be the new one.
Those are the ones you just sent me.
What is the contribution of man-hours?
Um, I might have left it, because there's also a spot for the address, which I didn't have. Um, let's see.
And one thing, Buddy, um, when you get a copy of your insurance, usually, um, we end up with just a photocopy of it? Is that okay?
And that has to stay.
I can do that for you, but have we done that in the house?
Either you guys send it to us or the insurance company will, cause they'll ask you, because with it being our property.
Is the town an additional insured on it?
No.
And I knew it was gonna change.
Okay, that's usually when you'll get a copy. If you're an additional insured, you'll get a copy from the insurance company.
Maybe we need to find that out and get that taken care of as well on our end. Because that should be, that should be done too. The idea to put in it, cause we hadn't discussed a number yet.
The, the only other thing, Nikki, is, um, number eight, it said generators, use of generator, generators. Uh, the fireworks, not really too worried about it, but the use of generators in public parks is prohibited. We may, if we ever have a vendor come down, food vendor could use, need to use a generator, and also, you know, sometimes we run into a pitch and we gotta, you know, put our, uh, pitching machine on a generator. I, I would kinda like to see that.
Okay.
Out of there, I mean, for use of, for Little League use, at least. The fireworks, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not too worried about. There's too much methane down there, would be doing fireworks anyways.
Have you talked to Sheriff Taylor regarding the road control?
What's that?
Have you talked to Sheriff Taylor regarding the road control?
I haven't, I haven't. I would like to though, and I think you would be.
And I'm not laughing because I actually love the idea, don't get me wrong. I'm all about shooting quick, but.
Can I ask you now?
We have just issued departmental mousetraps.
Maybe I should, maybe I, maybe I should ask you later.
Talking about ball carts and shotguns.
I know, we, and I, I got those plug-in ones and they're working.
I volunteer for that duty.
But that's not for, that's for the building.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll get ahold of, I'll, I'll talk to them further about that. I think that probably would be a private section.
Um, the town of Lakeview's contribution outside of blading and a hundred dollars towards maintenance and prevention of non-occupy. Because we have not, I think I've left that out, because we've not quite come to an agreement on the amount or what we thought would be reasonable.
And, and to, to be completely honest with you guys, I, I was waiting for this so I could take it to my board and make sure they didn't want any changes on it as well too. So I just want everybody to know that. I, I gotta take it in front of Little League boards, which I'm sure everybody can be fine with, but, um, obviously I would like to see a little bit more than a hundred dollars on weed control. It's not really gonna go very far.
Did you get any estimates?
Huh?
Did you get any estimates on?
Well, it's, uh, right now, I, I talked to Ms. Jaeger, and it's pretty hard to give an estimate right now. And the reason that is, is because it's overgrown right now. And to just maintain it, we don't know. You know, we need to get it to that point. Because if we was to do an estimate right now, it wouldn't be a factual estimate to give down the road when we do have the weeds in, in, in control status. So.
Okay.
We could always put it in there, it will help with weed control and just not like a dollar amount on it, just appreciate that at the time.
Then we can come to an agreement at that time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, Buddy, you have a system?
Right, the town's on to it.
Well, what about the fact that, because we don't have somebody that's licensed to do non-occupy?
Um, I thought Jeff was gonna send him to, to have him licensed, and I don't know if he, I can't remember if he said he did or not.
Be a great idea, there's a lot of weed in Lakeview.
We got two years to figure it out, so.
Well, they have to do the alleys and.
Yeah.
Curbs and stuff like that, so I'll check with Jeff, he'll be here at four.
And then as, as far as, I don't see the, the, the amount in here.
It's not, cause we, I hadn't put it in there until we knew what we were looking at, and I know that, um, what, um, was it a thousand?
I, well, I started at fifteen hundred. I would like to see more than that because I, I know you guys have to go through everything, but if we use fifteen hundred dollars worth of man-hour, um, that gets ate up really, really, really fast.
I did that, roughly estimate, roughly two employees for about four days.
Yeah.
Rough.
And I mean, we're talking six months worth of, well, not quite six months, but a long, long, long season with the baseball.
What are you foreseeing that they could contribute?
Well, the weed control would go into that, so that would take up a lot of time. I'm guessing Jeff would probably say that the grader goes into that. That's man-hours, that's equipment time. Would the fuel, would the fuel that we use at the grader, would that go into that? The pesticides, the weed control, that man-hour, the pesticides go into that. I mean, you're talking, if you have a guy on a grader down there for a day and they spray weed for two days, fifteen hundred dollars made up. So, it, it takes a lot to run a person, I know that. So, um, really, really fifteen hundred dollars is, not even.
What do you think about that?
Now, if you guys were to say that the grader and the fuel and everything is just its own thing, you know, we don't add that into the man-hours, we don't add that into the fifteen hundred dollars, and you guys were to say that weed control is its own thing, we don't add that into the man-hours, we don't add that, then, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars, we're probably looking at something, you know, for whatever it may be, water line repair. I don't know, that almost seems like I should fall on the town to me anyways because it's the main line, you know, may, not the field of course, but like the main line comes through.
Let, let me talk with Jeff a little bit, right?
Okay.
Before we make a determination on that.
Yeah, I, there's, I know there's a lot of conversation.
The other thing is, we're getting ready to go on the budget again, as you know, and I'm a little unsure on some of the budget.
And I think, I think we still have, um, money from marijuana tax. That would be good to use for.
Yeah, we've got, we've got some avenues to look at. I also wanna talk with Dan and Jessica a little bit about the hotel tax and a couple other things.
So, um, I'll revise this a little bit, kinda discussing this, and then, um, you'll have to take that to your board and see what they say too.
Yeah.
Um, and then we also have to have our, our legal.
And I'm, you know, I've, I've ran a cast past a couple of board members and I'm, I'm sure that they're, they will be fine, but it's, it, all fairness, there's, there's some of us, you know, we, we all need to be on agreeance of it in the Little League board, so I don't wanna take it, I don't wanna take it upon myself to say yes or no, so.
Yeah, well, and, and, you know, we wanna support you because we feel like that's the best amount we really need to make.
Yep.
There's not enough for the kids in this town as it is, so we wanna push this as far as we can.
And the baseball, opening up the baseball field, you know, but we're playing on down, it's a lot more than just baseball for the kids. I just hope everybody understands and realize that.
Soccer and, uh, golfing and anything else.
Yeah, maybe some pop ball, football practices, you know. I mean, there's a lot, there, there's a lot that it can open up to, so. I just want everybody to, to remember that, it's not just, it's not just baseball.
It's getting called Little League, but it's not.
Buddy, do you know what?
It's not that bad.
Have a favorite?
We're, we're trying really hard to get, we're trying really hard to get our, our Vabris signed up stuff right now. Um, it's actually looking very good. They should know.
No.
It's a struggle, right?
Last text I, last I heard it, maybe, but now, now maybe not, so. But if the, I do want everybody to know that the Vabris field, I played on a Vabris field when I was a kid. I played all over Oregon, and that field was probably one of the nicest fields that you could come play on. That field will be back up in working order, and the Little League will use that field whether there's a Vabris or not.
Well, I know I spent a lot of hours and days down there working on that field, getting ready for the tournaments.
That's probably why there's little holes in it.
You gotta be quick, Rick.
Sorry, sorry, no, we are gonna get that field back to Baptist standards.
Sure, can I borrow your cups?
My cups.
For all years.
Go straight to the gun.
Don, go give me the duct tape.
Listening to.
I, I do have a, I do have a, I do have a quick question though, on the, on the water.
Yeah.
There, there is a backflow device there, and I know the town has backflow devices, quite a few of them around town. Or do you guys test those?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, not the backflow, no.
Well, I thought Jeff.
He does, Jeff does our, the properties that we own, but the hospital, when they do theirs, they have to hire out.
Okay.
So let's double check.
But you guys do your own backflow devices. Can that back, I would like it, that.
Yeah, doesn't that?
Yeah.
You might talk to Jeff and.
That, cause that's a certification, Jeff must be certified for it, so, um, if he could, if he could test that backflow device, because it, well, it needs to be, it needs to be, it needs to be checked.
Okay.
And tested, and, cause it's.
They get done once a year.
And that's all, it all has, it only has to be annually, but, uh, how long has that one been? Jeff might be testing it. He might be doing it, I don't know.
And it may get.
Yeah, but, uh, if the town could help us out with that, that would be much appreciated.
Been here for a long time.
But have it been tested?
Yeah, right.
I assume the town does, and it should be doing it every year. It's our property.
And if we do, Jeff hires someone out.
I wouldn't think so for that one.
I don't know.
If he's doing all the others, he's probably doing that one.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, we'll look into that too.
I don't, you know, I don't feel that the.
Oh, yeah, Jeff.
Sorry. I would suggest, hearing, um, and speaking with Buddy and your initial plans, just to, to take under advisement, this might be a really good spot to start with your thirty percent, and so you wouldn't have any answering to any kind of, you know, to really get this off the ground. And then you could use your seventy percent after that, like, in a year and a half from now, and really hit that tourism money and, and see pretty much probably immediate results. If you use it that way and kind of start it out with your thirty percent where there's no questions asked, and there's, there's no one, you know, we don't have to call Orla or Traveler Oregon or, or anyone to make sure that we're using this money absolutely correctly. And then if we transition, once he gets this, um, you know, the field up and going, and we've gone through this transition, and we're ready to really start promoting, really start getting, you know, a lot more kids involved and getting visiting, I mean, then you can completely transition into that seventy percent with, with not even a blink of an eye, just to give, you know, to just do it, make sure that we're. to give, you know, to just do it, make sure that we're doing it the right way with those dollars. Um, it seems like a really good fit to start, you know.
Sounds like a great idea to me.
Yeah. Yeah, well, because you don't have to answer, those are your, that's, that's what, to use that money for the, I mean, we're a hundred percent, a billion percent behind this, we think this is a fantastic project, the Chamber can't wait to get behind this project. Um, and, and we do see a multi-use out of this, we completely see, you know, it's starting with Little League, transitioning into soccer, or anything else that we can have there, events, I mean, anything there. Um, but, to take under advisement, using, starting out with that thirty percent, so that you can get some of this stuff kind of knocked out with that money, and then going into the tourism money, um, you know, the tourism money, it's a bigger pot, but, but it comes with a lot more regulations, so it might be easier for the town to, to start with a thirty, would be.
Because you're really in a renovation and development phase right now, and that maybe isn't looked at so much as, um, tourism related, that you certainly, that's what you're, what's gonna end up happening.
That's where we're headed, yeah.
So.
And we see that pretty clearly, we see that that's where we're headed, and it'd be a lot easier to use that money when we're closer to that goal than now, would be our advisement.
The only thing I don't wanna see, this is gonna sound greedy, but, yeah, but it is. The only thing I don't wanna see is the Little League lose the baseball field for any part of the year whatsoever.
And I did change that in this.
When we have, like, you know, Jessica said that some events, and I think it's a great idea, I don't know what if there's any help down there, but.
No, I mean, Jeff, I'm just saying.
But later on, you never know what Lake County might bring, maybe, maybe later on, might be a really nice place to have a concert. It might be something really cool to do down there, but, and I'm not always gonna be on the board, but I really don't wanna see the Little League lose their voice in it, that's the only thing I'm very concerned about.
I, I can't, well, we got kids playing baseball, stay right where it's at.
So, if the Little League's gonna sign a contract or a lease agreement for the park re, it's under Little League's control.
And whatever would come would have to be brought over your board.
I just wanna make, you know, I just, just wanna make that.
Well, that's, that's what we put in here to ensure that you, as a board, just deal with that. I mean, we've obviously had our communication and things like that, but.
Well, we, the town and Little League have to work together, you know, and we just follow each other.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's your fields to use, that's what you guys are investing a lot of money in the future for, so, if you guys find an additional use, that somebody wants to bring them out or, or whatever for, then that's.
Look forward to it, okay.
Okay, we need to move on. Um, the next item is down, down by, time change.
Thanks, Buddy.
So, what, you know, I, I don't know what, what we need to do is check, like, the first, this meeting, the first meeting, was when we get all the department reports, but if we change it to a later time, are we gonna have to pay them to have to come back?
No, they, they flex the hours, it's pretty standard across the board. I have researched this a lot, because I know a huge issue that we have is people asking for transparency, to be available to come, you know, to their meetings. Um, we are the only town, and I've called probably about four times, if not, down their information online, but I have not come across a single tenant that's a prior five thirty a week, and all of their finance director, um, at times, their recorder, and the person that they have sit in is there, but they flex the hours, because, I mean, we're talking, let's say, an hour or two, and they just flex those hours, I mean, the town manager would have to, to manage that.
What I would like to do is leave this one at four o'clock, and then make the second one move it to a later date and see how it works.
Move it to six.
Try, a trial period at it.
Well, there's, there's a way it has to be done, because this, this one has to be here.
First, we have to try to add a, a repeal, because there's two different theories going out there. I wouldn't have soggy as pool, and I mean, this one's like, something Don will have to, it's. So, one thing that guys are gonna have to remember, that there would be overtime, it would be mine, because I don't really have a town manager who's, uh, uh, who's gonna be taking into consideration, uh, we've always been able to watch our hours, uh, what's that gonna do for a time change for, um, us here in the office? Because, are they gonna need the extra person? You know, there's something to think about. So, you, you wouldn't be allowed to flex your hours, then?
No, that, that's up to the town manager, that's what it means.
Yeah.
So, that's just something to take into consideration, because we're allotted seven and a half hours a day. So, when I'm here, if I'm here till five, five thirty, that's an hour of over, over my overtime. So, I try to be careful with that, because I do work air quality on the weekends, so I do try to watch myself.
I think that, um, the most important thing is that we probably will be accessible to the committee, and, and I totally understand what's coming from there. Um, uh, I think we'll probably have to dispatch with the town manager flexing hours, um, seeing what kind of turnout we get, you know, and trying, we're obviously gonna have to do a lot of this, because it is pretty. Yeah, we're gonna have a discussion about it, and then, um, we need to figure out what's the actual status of this right now. So, um, I don't think we have a box that says, or a binder that says where all our ordinances are in the city, that we know of.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was not.
The status of our ordinances, we don't have one central location that we know of.
Where they are all at, I have a book of ordinances, and I have a USB drive full of ordinances.
Okay.
Yeah, this one doesn't have. And there's a shelf from when this place, when it first originated, every ordinance that was ever adopted is on the bookshelf in Jeff's office.
So, my understanding is there's something from two thousand twelve.
Possibly, I would have to try that, and I can also.
So, I mean, we'll have to discuss this further with our, um, other councilors, but I just wanted to say this is something I think that we need to, um, repeal and update to be more applicable to, to include the public, um, I mean, it's a more, it's moving.
It should be a, it should be a qualified index that has all of the ordinances in it, I mean, I have one, I have another in my office.
We, we would all love that, we're working on it, finding it.
I have one in my office, so I'm sure, I probably got one.
I think Don's gonna have to.
I haven't emailed yet, at least, you know, the different areas, right?
Yeah, the categories, yeah. I have it, yeah. And this is, I mean, it's, it's a lengthy document, there's more than just, um, time, time stuff in this, so, yeah, we'll have to go further on that, but if you can, um, yeah, work on that in your spare time. Like, I'll do my last, that's pretty much, that's pretty much what I have, yeah.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Nothing, we're good.
Okay, we'll adjourn the work session at, uh, three fifty-six.